Good evening and welcome to the Candidates for Town Council President Debate. I'm John Moserow, and I will be your moderator for this evening. I'd like to introduce to you our candidates tonight. Candidate Phil Boncorry.
Thank you very much.
And candidate James Luteri. We also have here tonight our panel that will be asking questions. We have Stephen Quigley from the Winthrop Transcript, Betsy Shane from the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce, and Ron Vecchia, who is representing WCAT. To my left here, you don't see him, but I have Eric Gaynor, who will be our timekeeper. So how the night will run tonight is that each candidate will have an opening statement, and they will get to speak for two minutes. After that, we will then have a flow of questions that will happen. And when you're asked a question by the panel, you will have 90 seconds to answer that question, and each candidate will then have 90 seconds to answer the same question. We will do a process of 11 questions. When we complete that task, we will then have the candidates. You get to ask each other three questions, and that will still happen the same way, where you'll have 90 seconds each to answer the question, and then you'll have 90 seconds to either rebut the question or you'll have 90 seconds to tell us what you'd like to tell us. So that's your option at that point. And then, at the end, we'll have a closing statement. And that, the closing statement, you'll have two minutes. So I just want to remind the viewers tonight that Election Day is November 2nd. It's very important that you remember that. And as the debate goes on, when we go to close, I want to also remind everybody of all the other seats that are up for election. So without any further ado, I'd like to begin. And we, just so that everybody knows, before the debate occurred, we drew the names of who would go in what order. So for the opening statement order, Mr. Boncorry is first.
Thank you, John. And thank you to WCAT, Chamber of Commerce, and the Winthrop Sun Transcript for hosting this event so that we can get together and give you our opinions and the reasons why we are running. My name is Phil Boncorry, and I am your council president and have been for the past 22 months. During that 22 months, we have accomplished so many things. I ask you to just look around the town, and you can see the accomplishments everywhere. We got the Center Business District zoning finished. We got a map that we finished that had been going on for years. The reason I ran after 15 years of being on the council and not running during that 15 years was because, finally, I saw there was stagnation. There were things that we had voted. There were monies that we had gotten for projects to do that weren't being done. We got 200... In 2017, we got money to do the Center Business District. And it sat there. It sat there because the zoning wasn't in place. So we made sure the zoning was in place, and we got it done. And it's almost finished during my two years. And it should be finished completely, at least by the spring. The middle school project has sat there for eight years and not been done. We finally got that going, and it's ready to be bid on. We've increased the transparency all during the time we were hit with the pandemic. And during that pandemic, we were able to get testing for every single person in Winthrop for over a year. We were able to open up vaccination sites and take care of the elderly and senior citizens. And we fast-tracked outdoor dining, so we lost no restaurants. And proudly, we committed the Commission for Diversity.
Thank you, Mr. Boncorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Luteri.
Thank you, John. I would like to thank the Winthrop Chamber, the Transcript, WCAT, as well as our moderator, John Moserow, and the council president for making this event possible. It seems very cliche to say, but Winthrop truly is at a crossroads in many ways, and one of the most important being leadership. I am certainly not the new guy on the block, but I am running as a new vision in leadership, a clear direction for Winthrop, and stabilizing our town government. The town charter gives very specific powers to the council president. The council president is the CEO of the town and, as such, is given the ability to get things done. I have been saying for a while that instead of being a town of immigrants, Winthrop has turned into a town of interims. We currently have an interim town manager, an interim CFO, an interim treasurer, an interim town clerk, an interim fire chief, and potentially, an interim assessor. The town cannot fill any of these positions until we secure a new town manager. We cannot delay that process any longer than we have. By virtue of running for council president, one is also running for the school committee. Having that connection, when used properly, is so vital for the town, and it's vital for the town and the school to be in sync. Education is a passion of mine, and I will take that responsibility of being an active school committee member and putting the needs of our students first. The two most vulnerable segments of our community are also the two that have been affected the most during the pandemic, our youth and our seniors. We need to place an emphasis on both with more programs and initiatives. I pride myself on being very accessible to the community, and I encourage you to reach out to me with any concerns or issues you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next part now, we're going to go to Part One, which is the main forum. So the panel will now ask nine questions to each of you. You will have 90 seconds at this time, and we will do the same thing when 30 seconds comes up. We'll show the 30-second warning. So our first question will be asked to Jim Luteri, and that will be asked by Mr. Quigley from the Winthrop Transcript.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes.
What do you consider the role as town council president to be? Do you consider that key role to be, in essence, the mayor and therefore, the face of the town, government, representing the town council at all town events and ceremonies, as well as working closely with the town manager on the day-to-day operations of Winthrop?
Well, thanks for the question, Steve. I think the role of the town man... of the council president is spelled out in the charter, and that person is the CEO of the town. In many ways, the face of the town, like a mayor would be. There are certain powers that town council president has that a mayor does not. And there are certain powers that, when we wrote the charter, the town manager has very specific and is a very strong town manager, where the council president is the leader of the council, needs to be cohesive with the council. But the town manager does have powers that council members do not have. So I think the town manager is, to answer your question, a figurehead of the town, someone who needs to represent the town in any way possible. Can they get to every event? You know, if possible, they should, yes. They should be the figurehead, face of the town. The biggest thing for council president is to be a leader, to be able to work with others, whether it be leadership, friendship, relationships. They need to build trust within the town. And I think, you know, being also on the school committee, when the charter was written, that was a key link, to have that council president in a role where they could connect and keep in sync the town and the school. So it's a very important role, but yes, it is the figurehead of the town, the CEO of the town.
Thank you. Mr. Boncorry.
Yes. As council president, I have been very active in both the town council and the school committee. I have attended every school committee meeting since I was elected town council president. That was something I had not had to do as a councillor. To try to bring someone new into a school committee after we are going to be losing definitely two qualified people in this election and possibly more with the election of the four that are running for office is going to break up that school committee somewhat. Good to keep someone there who has been there and has a leadership position there. As far as the town council president being the voice of the community, he is. And I have attempted to be, and I've used my voice to work with our state officials, both in the Senate and in the House, to get things done for Winthrop. Like during that pandemic, we were able to get those testing sites because of that connection, because I could reach out to other mayors and to our Senate councils and get Winthrop a testing center. And it was the only small community in the state that had a testing center. We were able to, because I was able to reach out directly to many lopes, we were able to get vaccinations for our sick and elderly delivered to their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boncorry. Our next question will start with Mr. Boncorry, and that will be by Betsy Shane from the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, John. There's a large amount of residential and commercial properties, life science facilities, as an example, being developed in so many of the communities around us. Why do you think there's no developers looking at Winthrop?
There are developers looking at Winthrop. We have, now that we have zoned the middle school site that's been sitting without zoning for so long, we are putting out bids now. We have someone writing RFPs. We're putting out bids, and we're looking for a developer to come up. It can be bio-science. It can be, you know, commercial real estate. It's zoned now for mixed use, which is what we did by putting it in the Center Business District. And hopefully, we'll get some developer in. There has been development in Winthrop. There have been many people that are developing and fixing up their houses because they feel good, and they were doing it during the pandemic. Development down the center is almost finished. They're doing a beautiful job down at the corner of Somerset. And that's a new development, and it's going to add to our roles in Winthrop, to our tax rules. Of course, we don't know what developers coming in because it's open to anyone. And anyone that comes in, you know, we will vote on and have, you know, what the people want.
Thank you. Mr. Luteri.
Thank you. Like the council president said, there is development going on, and the vast majority of it is residential. There hasn't been a ton of commercial interest in the town right now. As far as the middle school goes, we did... We were able, through the council president, the planning board, and the council, to change the zoning. The process for the RFP is still... The RFP has not gone out. We have hired a firm to help us set up the RFP to then send the RFP out for bids. I think there will be developers that are interested in it. We still need feedback from the town and from the citizens on that development. But development as a whole, and why, I think one of your original points of the question is why are they not coming to Winthrop? Winthrop is a unique community in a lot of ways. You know, transportation is an issue. To have companies in here that require a lot of transportation in and out, I think, is a difficult thing to do. I think we can't... I think some of the things that we offer, like a single tax rate, is a benefit for commercial businesses to come in. If you go to other big cities and stuff like that, you're going to have, pay a much higher tax rate. So I think the single tax rate is a plus, and I think it's something that we have to work on, to continue to work on. But you do see a lot of development. It just happens to be a lot of residential development right now.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Jim Luteri, and that will be asked by Mr. Vecchia.
Jimmy, how you doing?
I'm doing well. Ron, how you doing?
Our community has always had a revenue problem. How can Winthrop broaden its tax base without allowing additional new growth in housing?
Well, great question. Back in when, you know, the economy turned in '07, '08, we were told by the state, "We don't have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem." It's been a quote that's been told a lot. And we do. And, you know, we sometime rely on Massport and mitigation with Massport, as well as the MWRA. And now we go back to development. Obviously, the easiest way is to increase development, right? So you're going to increase your tax base. You're going to get more taxes, plus 2.5% every year, and that adds to the base. But there is also a cost to that, potentially, if you overdevelop because now you're talking about school population and the economy in the school and the budget of the school. So if you're bringing in... If you're putting on multiple properties, and a property is bringing in $8,000 in revenues and taxes, let's say. And if there's one child in that house, that child is costing roughly $16,000 to the taxpayers to enroll that kid, that person. So you have to look at development and look at, not just the money coming in, but the potential costs going out with it. And they're significant. So I think my vision is more of the development that you're seeing now, a lot of the smaller units. There is a development down the center that I think is looking great. And that happens. You see a lot of developments that come up. Somebody wants to do something, and a lot of people will say, "Jeez, I don't know if it's right." Usually, 80% of the time, when that's done, or 90%, it looks great, and it's done well. So if we could keep it on track and make sure we're looking at our expenses as well as the revenues coming in, I think we'll be in good shape.
Thank you. Mr. Boncorry, your response.
Yes. Ron, as you know, from your term as council president, we've always had a problem with revenues. Our expenses have not gone up. Our expenses are not killing us. It's our revenues aren't going up to cover those expenses. We've been very frugal with everything that we've done for the past 10 councils. We've really tried to keep it down as much as possible. And of course, unfortunately, now with Jim having to put in a trash fee, we got some additional revenue, not much, but some. And with our developments now that are going to be coming in, we'll have additional revenue. I'm planning on talking to Massport again. Of course, we got new revenue from them for the Winthrop Foundation, which has been coming in now. We've gotten our second payment on that. And that has helped because Winthrop Foundation has been able to help with the Dog Park. They've been able to help with other projects in town with $100,000 in each of those projects. So we are working on building our revenue. And I will be talking again with Massport soon because of the project that they have going on now.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Betsy Shane from the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce, and she will start with Mr. Boncorry.
Phil, going on some of what you were just saying, do you think that Massport and MWRA should be paying Winthrop more than they do now? And if so, how do we go about that considering where contracts are?
I think they should be paying us more. They use our... The MWRA uses our streets every day, and they come into Winthrop. Unfortunately, we can't set up a toll booth and collect any revenue because of that because it's state road that they use. But they are now paying us a stipend, and that stipend is to cover the police and fire responding to them as first responders in case any incidents happen. And it has happened once or twice this year that we had to respond to a problem at MWRA. And our people did it quickly, and they did it efficiently. They are trained in how to take care of hazmat situations. We have a wonderful team here at Winthrop that's looked at by all of the state. And I think that we're doing OK with them. They have a problem because they represent so many other cities and towns. In increasing the amount they give us, they have to fight it through numerous other cities and towns. Massport's a different situation. As I said, they've given us more money as far as foundation. But because of the project where they're expanding another 500 feet to put a buffer zone, we're going to go and ask them for more. And hopefully, they're also going to be soundproofing very soon because that's passed through the House, through the Senate. We need that soundproofing.
Thank you, Mr. Boncorry. Mr. Luteri, your response.
Thank you. First, I'll go back. I just want to correct the council president on the... I did not institute a $160 trash fee. I don't have that power to do that. I think there was a vote from the council, and ultimately, the town manager would set the rate for a fee. And that's a whole nother topic of conversation that I'll be happy to have. But as far as MWRA and Massport, we have to remember, the MWRA and Massport both have been very good friends to the town of Winthrop in a lot of ways. They've helped us purchase fire equipment, fire engines, and numerous other vehicles and such. But, you know, at some point, as the council president said, they use our roads. They do have police escorts coming in and going out now. But still, is there more money to be had? I think there is. I think there is a reluctance because there are 30 other communities that they're dealing with in terms of the MWRA. And those other communities don't like the fact that Winthrop gets money. But we're in a unique position, just like East Boston and Chelsea are in a unique position to get reduced tolls. I think we're in a unique position to try to go back to the table with the MWRA. And as far as Massport, we were able to garner some extra money, which we've used for capital expenses and such. But you know what? It is always time to try to get a little bit more. Why not? I mean, that's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Luteri. Before we move on, let me just give everybody a chance to take a water sip of water if you need a water break for a second. Great, all right. What I'd like to do... Our next question is Mr. Vecchia is going from WCAT. And I do know that Mr. Vecchia was our past town council president as well. So Mr. Vecchia is going to ask Mr. Luteri a question.
Mr. Luteri, if the town reached a budget shortfall that would require a cutback in essential services and a reduction to the school department budget, would you support an override question?
Well, a question like that, I'm sure you're much happier being on that side of the podium than this side of the podium.
Exactly.
If we had a budget... I know you have, and we appreciate your time, and thank you for your service. You know, to support... If we have a revenue problem, which we do usually almost every year, and if the schools are short, have to be short-funded, I don't know why it would be the schools. It could be anybody that's short-funded. You have to look at ways to increase your revenues. I mean, if it's of that serious of a nature that you're short, you know, $1 million, and you could only fund the schools, you know, you could only give them level funding for the following year with their contractual obligations and such, there's a number, usually about 1.3, 1.5, that they just need to stay level serviced. So if we get to the point, for example, this past year, we gave them $600,000 instead of the 1.3 that's just level serviced. You know, in most years, I would be incredibly unhappy with that. But this year, due to the OPAs money and such, and COVID money, they're able to maintain it. But I'm sure you want an answer to your questions, so I'll cut to the chase. If we are in a situation where we have, you know, no other source of revenues, and we need to look, I mean, I think, of course, you have to ask the... I don't want to make that decision. You have to ask the citizens to make that decision. It's not something anybody would want to do or choose to do.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Mr. Boncorry, your response.
Proposition 2.5 is the question that everybody wants to ask any politician if they would support. If it came to a 2.5 proposition going on the ballot, I would vote for it. Do we need it immediately? Probably. But no one's taking the forefront from the public to bring one forward or to bring it to the council. And, you know, our tax rate is much lower than many of the communities around us. And it's one of the reasons that, you know, we're usually in this financial bind, as you talked about in your last question. We pay a lot less taxes than a place like Nahant or Swamscott that are comparable to Winthrop. And we have a limited amount of people that we can get taxes from. And that's why we're trying to do some development. But outside of that development, there are only about 5,200 houses in Winthrop, if I'm correct, that pay taxes. So there's only so much we can get at the tax rate we have now. It probably should be increased. And if it was on the ballot, yes, I would vote for it. But we have not come to that yet.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Quigley from the Winthrop Transcript, and that will begin with Mr. Boncorry.
Phil, like communities across the nation, Winthrop has battled hard against the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic since early 2020. And global data indicates that the health crisis is not over. How will you continue to keep the townspeople safe and work with the Health Department on this vital health issue and other issues?
Thank you. The pandemic was a once-in-a-lifetime thing that really disrupted my 22 months of my campaign... of my tenure as council president. 19 months of it were affected by COVID. As I said before, we were fortunate to immediately work together with Bill Smith from the Board of Health to put in an emergency order, to have people wear masks and close stores. We were also the first people to open outdoor dining. We were the first town in the state to open outdoor dining, probably five, six days before the rest of the state got it open. But we also took every step that we could possibly take and went outside and reached outside because, as a CEO, I could reach outside of the town. And we reached out to the side of the town. We got that testing center. That testing center tested every day. We got vaccines in, and we vaccinated people. We're now working on getting boosters. We've had booster clinics, and CBS has been doing booster clinics here in Winthrop for the past week or two. We're waiting for the Moderna booster so that the first shots that we gave as a community can now give the Moderna shots. This isn't over, so people, please, still be prepared. Wear your mask and social distance.
Thank you. Mr. Luteri.
Thank you. And it's been a crazy 20 months, right? We can all agree on that. And I think the town has done a really good job. I think in some situations, we talk, and I talked earlier about Winthrop being a unique community. In this situation, I think it helped us slightly that we are somewhat isolated. It's not a passive community. We don't have people coming in and out for the most part. And I think that helped us a little bit. The Board of Health, the town, and, you know, how could you talk about COVID? And Winthrop without mentioning Meredith Hurley. I think she was there 24 hours a day, it seemed like, every day of the week.
She was.
And she did an incredible job. And we're all, and I'm sure the council president agrees, incredibly thankful for all she did during this pandemic. And it is not over, and it will continue. The numbers seem to be getting better. Even from the variant, the numbers are getting better in last week's report. And I think that is through the hard work of the people that we have in this town working day in and day out. The testing center was very much, you know, very much appreciated for the town. And it was incredible how many tests that was done on a day-to-day basis. But again, I think we're handling it well. And I think the darker days are behind us, but we still have to be cognizant of it because it is going to be around for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Luteri. The next question comes from me. And I will be asking Mr. Luteri first. Northeast Metropolitan School got the largest MSBA grant in its history of $141 million for its new school project of $317 million. It plans to bond the remaining $176 million over the next 30 years. The $141 million is in jeopardy unless the project is approved. Do you support this project? And if not, where do you expect our Winthrop students to receive vocational education?
Well, we are fortunate and have been fortunate for a long period of time to be part of the Northeast Vocational School. There were 12 other communities, or 13 communities in total, that involve. Winthrop roughly has 57 students that attend the VOG. And our yearly expenditure is somewhere a little south of $900,000. Just to do numbers for this project, it's an incredible project. I think it would be very hard to say they don't need the school. They don't deserve the school. They do, and the children need the school. This is an incredibly expensive project. The way it goes is one city of town says no. It will go to a popular vote, and it will be the culmination of a popular vote of all 13 cities and towns. And if it's one more than half of it, it will pass for all cities and towns regardless. This is something that I do believe in, and I do think it's warranted, and I think the kids deserve it. This is going to, though, when we have to look at how... You know, the question is, do they deserve it? Yes. Should it be built? Yes. Now, you got to look at how it's going to be paid for. We could look in... There are many options into how we could pay for this. You know, and I could go into them here, but I only have 30 seconds. But roughly, I'll say that obviously, it could be absorbed within the budget. We can ask for a debt exclusion to pay for our portion of the bond. We could look at other items that might be coming off the rolls that we could use to subsidize the cost. So what we think is going to happen is roughly, we have 57 students. If the school is built, it also increases enrollment, which could put our enrollment towards 70. So we're looking at going from something short of $900,000 to 1.5 million.
Thank you. Mr. Boncorry.
Thank you. I appreciate the VOG school and all it's done. One of my grandsons just graduated from the VOG this past year, and he is doing a wonderful job working as an electrician. So I am thankful for the VOG school. But last night, we had a motion before us. The council came in his new business, and the recommendation was to vote against it, to follow Chelsea, who has voted against it, I believe, and for us to follow their suit and vote against it and force it to be put on the ballot. Because we put it on the ballot, then we know what the citizens want. And then we can follow our citizen's injury as to what their feeling is. So... So even though it was put on the ballot, because it was the first time on the ballot, Jim, my opponent, put it off. So we couldn't vote on it last night, and it's in his committee, and it'll probably be coming back next month. But my feeling was that it would have passed, not passed last night, it would have been voted to not join in the suit and let it go to the people for a vote.
Thank you. Our next question will be led by Mr. Vecchia, and you will ask Phil first.
Thank you. A portion of Shirley Street from Delby's Corner to the Winthrop Yacht Club has been designated an opportunity zone by the federal government. This allows investors and developers an incentive to waive capital gains taxes for 10 years. Do you have a vision for what that area could be?
That's exactly what my vision is for the next two years, and I have said it numerous times. This goes all the way back to when you were council president, all the way back to when Jeff Durco was the council president. We've walked that area, we've looked at that area, we've had visions as to what we could do with that area, even putting a restaurant out on the jetty that goes out from there. That needs to be developed. That would make Winthrop a true seaside town. We could attract tourists. It would be a perfect area to have stores all along there with apartments above those stores. We would be inviting to bring people in by the ferry to Winthrop, to use Euro Beach, and to see what Winthrop is all about. I think it's an important vision and an important step that I would like to see started when I get reelected on November 2.
I think it's a prime spot for mixed development down there. You know, people have talked for a long time about how people live in Boston and they pay multi-millions of dollars to look at Winthrop, and here, you'd be right on the water looking at the Boston skyline for probably a third of the price. I think it's prime development, it's perfect for multi-use restaurants. Where you have, you could have an ocean walk right there, a harbor walk right there. You know, you have to be cognizant of the neighborhood, you have to be cognizant of parking and such, and you have to look at that when you're looking at an RFP for that and put it out and have parking restrictions and such, and make sure that they have, you know, accessibility for parking and such. And you want to help the local community down there in terms of the residents and the businesses that are currently there, but, you know, to answer your question, it's absolutely a prime spot for a perfect development like that.
Our next question will be asked by Mr. Quigley, and that will begin with Mr. Luteri.
Jim, Winthrop is beginning the process of selecting a new town manager. What do you consider the most important responsibilities of the Winthrop Town Manager? Also, do you think the town manager should continue to seek more regional initiatives such as the Climate Resiliency Office that we share and support with the cities of Chelsea and Revere?
Well, as far as characteristics of a town manager, I think a town manager should be very in tune with Winthrop. You know, we could go back and talk about a residency requirement and such, which is a charter change, which, you know, we've had, we're on our third charter change, and we haven't really made any significant changes, but, you know, I do think somebody needs to be in tune with our town and needs to be active in the town and needs to live, if not in Winthrop, relatively close to Winthrop. There are people that are out there, I'm sure, that are very able to fit that role. Obviously, a town manager should reach out to all cities and towns surrounding us to look at any initiatives they might have that would help us in some way, shape, or form. Always be incognizant of how it affects Winthrop in terms of costs and services to the residents of Winthrop. And, you know, it's got to be Winthrop first, right? We have to look and maintain our citizenship. It's a process to select a town manager and go through the process, it's a six-to-eight month process. There's been many times on our last search, we had to go out for a second search. The city of Natick went out on three searches, and it took them close to a year and three months to get a town manager. So like in these, we talked about COVID a little bit ago, and it's put a lot of professions like superintendents, town managers, at a premium. And, you know, we just got a message from the, or a directive, more or less, from the assistant, the interim CFO right now, saying that he believes that we should be looking at a salary close to $220,000 for a town manager, which is 35% over what we have currently.
Mr. Bunkory?
Yes. I agree with one important part of that. The town manager that comes in to be the town manager of Winthrop in the future has to be a person that cares about the town of Winthrop first. Unfortunately, we've had town managers that haven't been from the town, that haven't really tried to acclimate themselves to the town and become part of the town. We have an interim town manager right now who is doing a fantastic job and would be a perfect town manager going forward. Unfortunately, it may not be able to happen, and because it may not be able to happen, we've been working on trying to get that to happen, but because of personal issues, it may not be able to happen. We have to find someone like him. We need an educated person, someone with an attorney's degree or a master in business administration. We need someone that lives in the town or cares enough about the town, who had lived in the town, has moved out, or who's willing to come back in and move in the town and to go forward with what we're looking to do. That's it.
Bunkory? Our next question will be asked by Ms. Betsy Shane in the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce, and you will ask Mr. Bunkory first.
Thank you. Phil, if the town continues to have transportation by water, whatever that might look like, how do you propose to connect the landing to the various business districts?
That is something we should have done a couple of years ago with the shuttle bus, transporting people from there to the center. Unfortunately, with the pandemic and the stores being closed for a while, it sort of went off the track. But we definitely need the ferry, and I hear a lot of people are concerned about the ferry. During my administration, the ferry has cost the town nothing. It's completely been reliant on grants and people that are paying to use that ferry. But the ferry is an important alternate transportation for our town with, you know, Revere Street being closed now, and it's, you know, and it's so tough to get out, and there's one ways. That project up there between National Grid doing one right now, and then they're coming in with a TIPS program that is going to take up that entire road, that every day is going to be a project trying to get in or out. You're going to either be detouring up around and coming down Upland Road, and maybe one road will be coming in, some days both roads are closed, as they have been this week. That alternate transportation ferry service is a necessity during this period of time.
Mr. Luteri?
Thank you. Thanks, Betsy, for the question. To go back to the original question on transportation, some sort of transportation from the landing to business districts, whether it be the center, the Highlands, wherever, you know, it has been discussed. I believe the previous town manager looked into electric vehicles and, you know, something similar, I don't want to say a golf cart, but like a smaller type vehicle that could take people around. You know, going back to the more important topic is the ferry itself. The ferry itself hasn't, as the council president said, hasn't cost the town any money from the budget in over six years, five years now, but it did cost the town roughly $500,000 in the first three and a half years. But it is something that I think it's a, it's not a necessity, it's kind of a luxury item, it is something that is incredibly fortunate for us to have, but I think we need to partner with someone, because the fact of the matter is, it's roughly a $400,000 budget for the ferry, and it roughly takes in about $65,000 in ticket sales. So that missing link, that 300-plus thousand, has to be filled in by somebody. We've already been told that the grants, this is the last year for the grants, but I think it would be a great asset, we just need to partner with somebody like the Massachusetts Convention Center or UMass Boston, something like that to help us get over the hump with that.
Thank you. The last question in the first round will be asked by me. And this question, it's interesting because I wanted to think of some, you know, I've, like everybody else, I'm on Facebook, pay attention, you know, you see what's happening and what people are talking about, and of course, always the schools bring things to my attention, and I see a lot of stuff, again, going on about gridlock at Gorman Fort Bank. And then you hear a lot about, well, we need a new fire station. And the reason I'm bringing these, connecting these together is because there was a suggestion that was made that I thought kind of was an interesting suggestion, and it made me even think about it as a past superintendent, of a proposed possible solution of maybe converting the Fort Banks School into a public safety building, and then maybe turning the middle school, that the current, the old middle school, into where the Fort Banks School would be, would go. And so, do you think the Fort Banks School is in the wrong place, number one? That's a question. Would you support such a proposal to take a look at that? And this is being very creative as we move forward. Or do you have other plans to address these particular issues? And I start with you, Mr. Luteri.
Okay. All right. So way back when we started, when we built these two schools, basically the Cummings School and the Fort Banks, the Gorman Fort Bank School, they were initially supposed to be neighborhood schools, right? K to five, both of them. And then it changed to pre-K to two and then three to five for the Cummings. So that's one of the issues that, you know, now we have people from all over the town coming to the same place instead of more neighborhood schools. So that was something that we could still look at, I guess, potentially. As far as, you know, quickly going to a public safety building there, if we have problems, I'd much rather have a problem with a parent leaving with a child to get home than I would for a fire engine to get to a fire. You know what I mean, in terms of traffic and such, that that road could, you know, we have a Revere Street tip project coming up that's going to last the better part of a year and a half, starting in the spring of '23, and I get concerns already about how we're going to get people in and out of there. As far as turning the middle school into, as far as replacing the Gorman Fort Banks and putting it at the middle school, you know, I've said for a while that you look at all three of our schools, the Gorman Fort Banks, the Cummings School, and the Middle High School. The Middle High School has a population of about 1,100, and it was built for about 995. And the Fort Banks and the Cummings are also right at the thresholds there. We talk about development, which development will bring in families, which is great for the town, but it will affect the population, so I think that that's something that we could leave open. But in terms of, is it the wrong place? No, I think the school is fine there.
Thank you. Mr. Bunkory?
Okay. Your question is multifold. I think that we do need to get an access road through that, and I've been trying to push this access road through for quite some time. I think there's a possibility we can do it in the next two years. We've been looking at it, we've got designs, there's just one bit of engineering left to be done. It was discussed last night at the council meeting. The situation with the public safety building, public safety building is going to cost $80 million just to build a public safety building. If we have to build a public, because we have the design for it, we have two locations where it could go, we've already been doing that work for the past four to six years, so we have a plan. It's the $80 million. We haven't had a two and a half override, we haven't had a debt exclusion for the past few years, so we don't possibly have the money to do that unless we do it. And it's the same for both situations. If you're going to build the school, you know, over at the center, you're going to have to raise $60 million for that, plus $80 million for the other building. So it would be beautiful, but it's not something that I think we're going to be able to do.
Thank you for completing the first section of the debate, and now we're going to go to the second section where the candidates will ask each other questions. So each candidate will get to ask three questions. The first question will be asked by Mr. Bunkory to Mr. Luteri.
Jim and I have been on the council so long together, there's not too many questions. We don't know about each other. But Jim, just a first question for you. You've had to recuse yourself from many of the votes, along with two other members of the council, on anything that had to do with the Senate Business District because of your business being there, and you got an opinion letter saying that it would be unethical for you to vote on those things. We're still not finished with that Senate Business District project, and we're going to be doing the landscaping in September when you become president. How would you be able to work on that if you are ethically imposed from doing anything on it by the commission that sent you that letter?
Well, I didn't receive a letter. I did call because I thought it was the right thing to do, and I was told after a couple of phone calls, I think me and two other councillors were told, that it wouldn't be the right thing to do to vote in a project that could benefit you in any way, shape, or form. So as far as the plantings and stuff like that, as far as the infrastructure being completed, when I take over in January, the project will be completed in the spring. So we're going to, you know, we're already delayed on the project, which I don't know why. If I was president, it would have been done when it was supposed to be done in December. But the project's been delayed probably two or three months. They will finish and they will do the plantings. Everything has been done, you know, regardless whose president comes January, the project has already been paid for. We don't have any additional things going into the project that's going to add additional cost to it that I would not be able to vote on. Anything that is voted on, something like that, needs a two-thirds majority of the council anyway, so it would need six votes. But, you know, I can assure you that when I take office in January, that it will be finished on time, from what they're saying now in early spring.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bunkory. You can respond. You have time to respond to your own question.
Part of the problem with, you know, that letter you got that forced you and Lucerto and Christopher to recuse themselves, it cost us a long time in getting that zoning passed. We couldn't get that zoning passed at a meeting because the three of you couldn't vote, and the other five had to be unanimous, and sometimes one person was missing, and sometimes one person wouldn't vote for it, and we lost probably six months at least on getting that zone because of the possibility you guys had to recuse and you couldn't do anything, even though you did do some things in talking about that situation.
Thank you. Jim, your chance to ask a question. Mr. Luteri, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Jim, it's fine. So, the town manager left Winthrop on FMLA leave, April 21st. With all the indications that he would not return, but we didn't know that. Come the first week of July, we knew for sure that he would not be returning. With the average time to secure a new town manager being between six and eight months, we've already lost about two months in the beginning of the search. Why didn't we start a search earlier?
Because both you and I thought Terry was the right person for the job, and we were hoping we were going to get five votes and put him in, until he came up with a situation now that he can't take it due to personal reasons and his pension, moving it from a Group Four to a Group Two and losing all his benefits as a police chief. So immediately when he gave us that decision that he can't take it permanently, we did put it on the agenda, and we did get the money last night to start a search. And it did take two months, but that two months was not wasted, it was trying to convince Terry to stay and be the permanent chief.
Mr. Luteri?
Okay. Regardless of who agreed with Terry being the permanent town manager, if the votes weren't there, you knew the votes weren't there a month and a half ago, we could have acted on it then. That's all I'm saying, because it does, again, take six to eight months. We have roughly seven interims that, an interim town manager has very limited powers and authorities. The major one that they cannot do, they cannot hire, they cannot fire, which is what led to all these interims. You know, until we hire a town manager, which could take six to eight months, now we're going to go through a complete budget cycle for fiscal '23, and we're going to do that without a full-time CFO. So, you know, that's unfortunate.
Thank you. To the second question, Mr. Luteri, you start this round.
The town charter was established 16 years ago. We were both on the committee.
Absolutely.
Since then, we're on our third review, which has yet to conclude. There's been lots of discussion around the town and amongst the councils about potential changes that they would like to see. What changes do you think, after 16 years dealing with the charter, would you like to see?
Absolutely, it should be changed. There is a mayor running this town who's a person that lives in Winthrop, cares about Winthrop, and is voted by the Winthrop voters, and not someone that's hired and coming from outside of the town. One of the major things, and you know I've felt that way for many years. And there are other things. I think that we don't pay our councillors. I mean, councillors in Boston are getting $100,000 a year to do the same job that Winthrop councillors are doing for $2,000 a year. It's just, you know, it's insane. Everybody that is a councillor volunteers, they give up their time, they give up their freedom to help make Winthrop a better place, and it doesn't look like they're appreciated. And oftentimes, as both you and I, we're criticized for volunteering. And, you know, there are changes like that that I think should be made, and maybe we should have a new charter commission rather than having... rather than having these five-year look backs.
Thank you, Mr. Luttery.
I do agree, like council president said, on as far as that there needs to be some changes. And it disappoints me that we really haven't come up with any major changes in the 15 years that we've been around. The only reason I'm very reluctant with a mayor is that, you know, you limit your, your pool of candidates, I guess, with a mayor, right? And most cities and towns with a mayor, or all cities and towns with a mayor, have someone else below that mayor that's almost like a town manager. And now you're looking at increased salaries and costs and such. And, you know, we've gone over through many discussions about the finances of the town and how, you know, we're trying, we're trying to keep as mainstream and lightweight as possible. And that would, to me, lead to incurred costs. But I do think that there are some significant changes that we can make, even in terms of the, the amount of councillors. I, you know, nine, I think is too many. You know, we had three selectmen way back and, you know, people thought that was too few. When we wrote the charter, we tried, we tried to be cognizant of all the sections of town. Even though only 1.6 square miles, they were as separate and distinct sections of Winthrop. There's the point, there's the Highlands, there's the center. And we have six precincts. And we did want to be inclusive of all that and make sure that there was a representative from each. But, you know, after being there, I think something like five at-large councillors is probably more realistic. So I think there are changes. And I, I don't know about a, a new commission, but I do think that, I would hope it's looked at a little more closely.
Lately, we've been hearing calls that they want more councillors.
Mr. Boncorry, it's your chance now to ask a question, so.
Okay. Jim, last spring, the town council voted to charge, to allow businesses that had to close during the pandemic to request a rebate or an allowance to not pay their licensing fees for the coming year. And that vote was passed eight to one. And you were the one person that voted against it. And why would you vote against helping your fellow businessmen have a break because of COVID?
Is that it? Yeah. I think it was for an alcohol license. And we were given advice from the town manager and the CFO at the time that with the finances due to COVID, even though it was a relatively small amount of money, that it couldn't be absorbed in the budget. And I went with the, the experts who told me that, you know, it's, it's easy to vote the way someone would like you to vote. It's harder to vote based on real numbers. And I had to make the tough decision to, to be realistic about it and not offer it. Now, if it, if it passed eight to one, but we still never did it.
People were allowed to file.
Hold on one second. Let me just make sure that you're finished.
Okay, I'm finished.
Okay, there you go. That's fine, go right ahead.
Yeah. It did pass eight to one and people were allowed to do that, to get rebates if they requested them. And the issue was that on all the votes that have passed that you didn't like, they were passed eight to one. And some votes, seven to two. But you were always under minority on the votes that passed against what you wanted.
Thank you. I think that's the end of the second part, right, on the second question. So on the third question, and let me just remind you, when you're asking the questions, you can respond when it's your, if you ask the question,
Yes.
you can respond on your own time about if you're in a disagreement or however you want to, or you want to clarify something. You can use that time as you go. So this time, Mr. Boncorry, you're going to ask your final question.
Jim, why are you running?
Thank you for the question. It gives me an opportunity to do a little free publicity here, right? I'm running because I think I am, I think I'm the perfect person at this time. I've been there, like you, for a long time, 16 years. I think I bring a new vision, a different vision, a different type of leadership. It's very hard, as you know, to sit in this seat for 16 years. And it's a grind, it really is. But I think we both love this community. There's no doubt about that. We wouldn't be doing this if we didn't. But I think it's time for new leadership. I pulled papers two years ago to run. And you asked me not to run. And you wanted to try it. You wanted to do the job. And I reluctantly said yes. And if I had, and no disrespect to you, but if I had one thing to do over again, I wouldn't have said no. Not that I would have won or lost, but it's, you know, I thought it was the right thing for me to do and I should have done that for the town. But I feel it's, it's not my turn. I don't deserve it. I'm not entitled to it. I feel I'm the right person for the job. And I think we need new leadership.
Mr. Boncorry, do you?
All right. I'm very happy with the leadership we have. I think I've done a good job and we've accomplished a lot. We've been able to see growth in the town, which, beside the pandemic that, you know, almost covers it, we did a lot of things. And if you look around this town, you can see. And it's been leadership because in every vote that we've passed, I've got a majority of the council to support me. We were able to get things passed, always at least five to four, because there's always been the councillors that would follow, would listen, and would do what I asked as council president. And that's the most important thing about being a council president. You have to be able to work with the other councillors. There are nine councillors. If you can't get five to support you, you can't get anything done in the town. Usually, we get all nine. Very few times, it's been eight to one or seven to two. And unfortunately, those times, Jim has been in the minority. And that may be the reason he wants to run now. But we've accomplished the things. We've got things done for this town for two years. We don't need to change now. We need to see me complete the things that we started.
Thank you. Mr. Luttery, your final question.
Thank you. And we'll start with the eight to one and seven to two votes because there have been, I'm sure, more than one or two, eight to one or seven to two votes. And some of that is because I do vote, being fiscally responsible, and to try to do what's best when it's not maybe the popular thing to do, but it's what's best for the town. And we'll go back to one of the seven to two votes. And one of the seven to two votes, I think we had most recently, was to not renew the contract of the previous town manager, which was expiring in August. There's been various documents and stuff out and just through meetings that you've obviously had some issues with the former town manager, as well as I have. I'm not saying I did not have my share of thoughts from the beginning that it wasn't just not the right fit. And it's, you know, like I said, that. However, my question is, why would you vote to extend the contract, which it now has cost the town a significant amount of money? Also with the fact that less than a month after, you know, that extension was given, he left.
You can answer that.
Okay. He left because he was chased out by being berated over financial situations by you and the rest of the members of the Finance Committee. He just couldn't take it any longer. Both he and Anna Friedman left. Once Anna left, after being chewed out during a council meeting, he was shortly there to follow. And it was because he was being lambasted on a daily basis about finances. There's no answer back, I don't think.
Right. I think we're good because you took the time there to ask that. So, okay, we are completing, we have completed the section of part two from Questions from Candidates. Before we go to our closing remarks, I am going to add 30 seconds to your closing remarks. I did see a couple of texts that at the very beginning, there was some mic issues. And I want to just make sure that you all have an opportunity to realize that. And I want to make sure that you have that opportunity to close. Before that, though, I just want to remind our voters that election is on November 2nd. And there are, not only is the president election for the town council president, there are three seats for school committee. There is also precinct one, three, and five. And there's an at-large position for the town council. Library seat and housing authority seat are up. So make sure that you get involved and pay attention. And I also want to just say to the two of you, thank you for running. I think it's important that the community realize that. It's not easy. In my role, I work with elected officials all the time who do not get paid. They do their diligence and they work with the communities. And this has not been an easy time for any public official. And so I want to thank you two for running. And I want to thank everybody else who is running. I also want to thank our panel tonight. Mr. Quigley from the Winthrop Sun Transcript, Ms. Betsy Shane from the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce, and former town council president and member of the WCAT, Mr. Ron Beckia. I'd like to thank over here to my left, Eric Gaynor, who was our time clock person. And I would also want to make sure that Michelle Lopez. Eric Gaynor, I said, I said time clock person, then I forgot to tell you, say who it was. Eric Gaynor. Thank you to Michelle Lopez. And of course, thank you to Mike Cabral, who sets this all up for WCAT. So with that said, as we go to our closing remarks, Mr. Boncorry.
Thank you very much. And thank you again to all of you for hosting us. This was an important event for the people in the town to see who we are and to hear us. Even though every Tuesday night, you can see us, we're on the council meeting. In closing, I have to say, leadership is setting a course where you want to go and having the ability to course correct when unforeseen or unexpected situations arise. And that's what this two years has been. We set a course two years ago when I stood before you and I asked for your trust. I asked for your vote to lead a town I grew up in, that I raised a family, children and grandchildren in, that I had a business in. And I dedicated my life to working for this town since I graduated high school in this town. I ran because I thought the town needed to accomplish certain projects that I saw that were stagnating. The Senate Business District, for one. The middle school, for two. The dog park, which people were asking for, for eight years, for three. Even though a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic came forward and caused a lot of problems in this town, we course corrected and we changed that things. We got the pandemic under control. We actually did our best to make sure Winthrop was a safe place. Unfortunately, right now, we're one of the highest percentage of vaccinated people in the state. We really have done a good job in keeping people safe. And I got to thank, you know, Bill Smith and Meredith Hurley for their help in doing that, as well as the MRC to getting the words out. Okay. We accomplished those tasks. Middle school, Senate Business District, new dog park. Under my leadership, we will continue in this progress. Please give, give me your vote November 2nd. And I will work for you to see these projects through.
Thank you. Mr. Luttery?
Thank you. I guess I'll use my extra 30 seconds at the beginning. We all know that the town manager, as well as the CFO, did not leave because I held them accountable for two and a half years. We all know that. The CFO and I still have, still remain in contact and have a very good relationship. And she was an incredible asset to the town. So we know the reasons why the town manager left. And I won't get into it right now. And in closing, once again, I would like to thank WCAT, the Transcript, the Chamber, John Masero, and the council president, along with the citizens who have taken two hours out of their hectic schedules to learn a little bit more about both of us. Investing the time and making a very informed decision and then voting on that decision is so very important. To me, being council president is all about leadership, relationships, partnerships, and citizenship. We are such a strong Winthrop when we work together to find common ground, act instead of reacting, stabilize what we have and maintain it properly for Winthrop's future. One of the many things that I have learned in my 16 years on the council is that government, whether it municipal, state, or federal, is very slow-moving. So whether it be discussing a new public safety building, developing in some way, shape, or form the middle school, getting clarity on water rates, finding a way to have Miller Field more accessible to the public, creating a natural canopy above us to beautify the town and protect us, looking at Winthrop's entrance at the bridge and making it safer. I know we can't do it all, but we need to start making some decisions. We need to prioritize and get things done. You know, a crazy saying is, they say, "Talk is cheap and actions speak." But I do believe that. And I can promise you that no one will work harder as council president to be a leader for all of Winthrop. I thank you and ask you for your vote on Tuesday, November 2nd.
Thank you. Once again, I want to thank both of you for participating tonight. And in closing, I wanted to remind, once again, our voters out there tonight that November 2nd is a very important day. Please do your civic duty and vote. Thank you.